Good evening and welcome to the Township of Howell's Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, May 8th, 2025. I apologize in advance, 20 minutes late, no excuse, my fault. Opening statement, Eileen, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice have been given pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 3rd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Greenfield is absent. Mr. Carbone?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse is absent. Mr. Rubel is absent. Councilman Nadel?
Here.
Mayor Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Beto?
Here.
And Chairman Husser?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards a moment of silence for our men and women serving both here and abroad. Thank you. Eileen, is there any minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Any correspondence?
We have one ordinance to go over, ordinance 25-14.
Is this going before our next meeting next week to the council?
That's the plan.
When's the next council meeting?
Uh, next week, do we get the 20th?
And we are the...
We do have another meeting on the 15th, next Thursday.
Can we push it to that, please?
Sure, yes.
All right. Yeah, if everybody could just review that prior to the next meeting. That's it for correspondence?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, thanks. All right, on to resolutions. Case number SD 3002, Frederick J. Hare, resolution granting extension of time on minor site plan approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic and Mayor Leggio, second.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Next is case number SD 3017, Lizette Chalula, a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mercer.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Next is case number SD 3014, Neil and Monica Slattery, a resolution granting an extension of time. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic?
Second.
Second, Mayor Leggio.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Review of resolution O-25-20, a resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-25-20, amending Chapter 188 land use. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic?
Second.
Mr. Mercer for the second.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Mr. Beto's on that one?
No, he wasn't.
No, no.
Oh, my mistake. So just Chairman Husser.
He should have been, right? Because that was with 2516 and 2515. Right? That was all the same night.
Yeah, it might be a typo.
I think he was there. Yeah, I think you were there.
I believe he abstained, I think, if I have it, last week.
Oh, yes.
So it was my mistake to call, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Good call, thank you. I'm a yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Approved.
Review of resolution O-25-16, a resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-25-16, amending Chapter 188 land use. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic?
Second.
Mayor Leggio.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Review of resolution O-25-15, resolution for review of proposed ordinance O-25-15, amending Chapter 188 land use. Eligible voters, Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Carbonic?
Second.
Mr. Mercer for the second.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. That completes resolutions, okay. Onto submission waivers. It's case number SP 1135, Star Cap Holdings LLC, it's for preliminary and final major site plan. Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Jared Pape, on behalf of Star Cap Holdings LLC, seeking the submission waivers. We do have a report from CME.
How about that?
Very good, Jared, thanks.
Good evening, Jared Pape, on behalf of the applicant, Star Cap Holdings LLC. As mentioned, we are here seeking submission waivers which are outlined in CME's March report. We'll look to Ms. Newman for her input.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give the board concerning this matter shall be nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers are specifically outlined at the bottom of Page 5 of our report in Item 3. There's four items. I typically require the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis, but this isn't actually a major stormwater development, so it doesn't prompt those regulations. So for that reason, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. If upon further technical review, because we do ask them to break out the area to confirm, because they're just under that threshold of a major development, I just want to note that if in fact it does turn to be a major stormwater development, I will want this information submitted.
Good, Jared.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carbonic?
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilman Nadel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. All right, onto the applications this evening. First, case number SD 3009, Augustine Kim. This is for an extension of time.
Yes, I'm Augustine Kim.
Good evening.
I'm waiting for my, you know, engineer.
Do you swear or affirm any testimony about concerning this matter shall be nothing but the truth? I do suffice.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
He said he's waiting for his...
Oh, you're waiting for your engineer this evening?
Right. The towns are required to appear at this, you know, this meeting I'm waiting for. I noticed I've been busy in office and didn't come in. I'm waiting for...
Okay.
Yeah, so I applied for the extension of the resolution approval expired. That's a, you know...
When did it expire?
Mr. Chairman, I could probably jump in. So this was a minor subdivision which was granted by the board May 9th of 2024.
Yeah.
In accordance with the municipal land use law, you have six months to file your maps, which would have taken them to...
November?
November, I think. Of November of 2024. So they would need a retroactive extension. And do you know how long you need in order to file your map?
Yeah, that's I contacted my engineer. I don't know how soon you're coming in or what.
This has to get carried.
I request many times, township needed the map, something.
Who is your engineer, sir?
Yes, the Harvard McDonough.
I do. I think he's a surveyor. I don't know if he's coming. I guess I can ask a couple of questions of the board and then maybe make a recommendation.
Yeah.
So with a minor subdivision, typically what happens is there's reasons why you were delayed. So did you diligently pursue all your outside agency approvals?
Yeah, that is one. My, I hire lawyer, he never had experience, does nothing, and he no experience. But my engineer, you know, he just engineering only, depend on the, you know, lawyer. Lawyer doesn't know. But yeah, I have a lot of problem this one. So I do myself and I contacted my, you know, engineer now. A few days ago, you know, actually in finish up, I get the last payment. But he asked for money, as I paid, not finish yet. I would three payment, one, two, three, I paid. So last time, I expect he to bring over the, you know, submit map, something filed to, you know...
Yeah, he has to file the map. Do you know if this township has reviewed the map and deemed it acceptable?
You didn't get it, right?
What's that?
You didn't get it, the map just...
I won't get it. It's reviewed by the in-house engineer. Do you know if he has been submitting and if the map is ready to be filed?
Yeah, I did many time. I don't know. That's why I pay off everything finish up, but he didn't do it. So I don't know how to do it, this one. I had somebody hire something like this one. I wanna meet with him next, tomorrow. What happened? I gonna find it.
Do you know how long you need from today to file your map?
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, how, why he delayed this one.
This is what I would recommend, Laura. Well, number one, there's some pretty darn good attorneys and engineers in the audience right now you might want to speak to. But we do have a meeting next week. Could we possibly carry this into next week and you come back next Thursday with your engineer?
Yes.
And have him kind of give a laydown of what's going on? Because I think we need to hear from him and how much time you would need in order to get this across the finish line, you know? I think that might be a better idea.
Yes, I will visit tomorrow.
Okay, so...
With him and I gonna make sure the time next, you say next...
Next, we meet next Thursday at 7:00. So, Eileen, would that be okay to pop him real quick on the agenda for next week?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So, yeah, meet with your attorney and then, you know, any questions, you know, we can deal with it next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
We will put you on the agenda.
What time?
7:00, same time, yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You have a great night. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next application is case number SD 3016, Benzian Youngress LLC. This is for a preliminary and final major subdivision with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Jared, I didn't think you were going home.
Make sure that this microphone is working?
Yeah, just move it close to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Jared Pape. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hileburn Pape. My office represents the applicant, Benzian Youngress LLC. First, we'd like to confirm the legal notices that we provided are satisfactory to provide this board with jurisdiction. The legal notices were originally circulated for the January 2025 meeting and it was adjourned several times, I believe, in March, April, twice in April, in fact, to this meeting with no requirement for re-notice. So just for the record, I would ask if Ms. Kusa perhaps could confirm that the notices are adequate.
Confirm the notices are adequate.
Thank you. This is a subdivision application proposing to subdivide one, approximately one-acre lot into two half-acre lots, each of which would contain a single-family residence which is permitted use in the zone and also consistent with the neighborhood, which is all single-family residences. This application was submitted to the Planning Board in September 2024, so about seven or eight months ago. And over that time, the applicant has had the opportunity to participate in TRC meetings with the board professionals, has also received feedback in the form of professional reports. And in response, the applicant has revised his plans a few times and provided some supplemental material, which has included architectural elevations and floor plans. And that's what is before you tonight. The testimony will be provided by Melissa Rubb, the applicant's architect, Timothy Laurie, the applicant's professional engineer, and Justin Osziello, the applicant's professional planner. So with that as our quick summary, unless there's any questions at this time, we'd like to move to our architect, Ms. Rubb.
So these sheets part of what's been previously submitted and worked out?
Thank you.
Yes, these were submitted and we've included on exhibit list.
Yeah, I'm working on it. But do you know when you submitted them?
Yeah, I think which one and two, architectural.
This one?
Yeah, one and two.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide to this board concerning this application shall be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, from state names, tell your last name and provide your business affiliation.
My name is Melissa Rubb, last name R-U-B, like boy, project architect at BF Design and Associates in Lakewood, New Jersey.
Ms. Rubb, could you please provide your credentials for the board to accept you as an architect?
Good evening, members of the board, chairman. My name is Melissa Rubb. I am a graduate of the City College of New York School of Architecture, licensed in the state of New Jersey. The drawings being presented tonight were prepared under my supervision. I have had the privilege to appear before this and other municipal boards throughout the state.
We will accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Rubb, your office was asked to prepare elevations and floor plans for the two proposed single-family residences, and I know we have exhibits of each. Could you perhaps walk the board through the designs?
Absolutely. We are proposing two, two-story residential homes. Can you hear me? Two, two-story residential homes with identical floor plans, approximate dimensions being 59 feet 2 inches wide and 54 feet 10 inches deep. The first floor is approximately 2,112 square feet, and the second floor is approximately 1,830 square feet. You can see on the top of the sheet is the floor plan. This will start with the first floor, which is in the center at the top.
This one? Is this the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's fine. The floor plans are actually identical on both of the, both of the homes. The first floor includes, here, right here is that front door with the front porch, which takes you into, thank you very much, that's better, the double-height foyer with a study adjacent, a combined living room and dining room on the left-hand side. In the, on the right hand is a garage with an at-grade entrance to a mudroom for access and convenience. And in the rear, we have the kitchen, breakfast nook, and family room. If we move up to the second floor, if I could just trouble you to scoot over a drop to the right-hand side. Thank you very much. The second floor has a master suite that's on the right with a walk-in closet, master bath, and four additional bedrooms, two more bathrooms, and a laundry room. We're proposing an unfinished basement and a storage attic as well. If we move to the elevations, so that's, there's a rendering at the center of the sheet. The building elevations differ slightly from one another. One features a brick facade with stucco accents and a asphalt chingle roof, as shown, while the other home on the first sheet, yep, perfect, thank you, has a slightly different roof configuration with cultured stone and siding finishes. I just wanted to quickly address the building height as well, as it was brought up in the review letter. We're proposing a median roof height of 31 feet 11 inches, whereas the ordinance allows for a maximum of 30 feet. The 1 foot 11 increase is, in our opinion, a more proportionate design for the size home. We provided an exhibit where we show, it's the third and fourth sheets in your packet, where we show the two options side by side, the 31 foot 11 inches and the 30-foot options. We just feel that a shallower pitch would compromise, you know, some of the aesthetic appeal, and we ask the board to please consider granting this relief. That concludes my testimony. Any other questions?
Nothing from me unless there's any questions from the board members or board professionals.
Any questions?
Is there any basement in this building?
We're proposing an unfinished basement at this time.
And would you have utilities down there?
Perhaps, yes. Yes.
What is the page that shows the height comparison?
Sure, that's Z2. So there's, there were two sheets. I believe they were emailed over today.
Yeah, it's this one.
There we go, yeah. So you can see on the left-hand side, the roof pitch is slightly steeper. On the overall architecture is the same, no changes to any of the room heights on the interior. It's just a matter of, again, a little bit more of a proportional roof design for the size of the building.
From a planning perspective, I don't think there's any reason they should not be able to comply with the height ordinance. So I think, you know, they should be able to design the building to 30 feet and not require that variance.
Laura, what's the zone in this area?
This is the R2 zone, so the maximum height is 30 feet 2 and 1/2 stories.
And what's the maximum square footage for the lot, for each house?
20,000 square feet.
So by cutting this up, they're both gonna fit that?
Yeah, I would hold testimony for the engineer to lay that out, but based upon what we've reviewed, it doesn't appear as in, it appears, I'm sorry, that the only bulk deviation is relative to height.
Is the height?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would note that, again, I'm sure we're gonna get into it, it's technically considered a major subdivision. It's a creeping major even though it's only two lots. So I think they should address that because being a major subdivision of the town, it prompts the buffer requirement.
And they don't meet the buffer requirement throughout the entire proposed subdivision.
And they also don't have public sewer. So these lots would be serviced by a septic system, and our ordinance requires a minimum lot area of 40,000 square feet.
And they're meeting that?
They're not.
They're not meeting it?
That's correct.
But that would be for the engineer.
Yeah. I don't think we have any, any questions for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you got Mr. Beto, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a question. So you mentioned about the height, and I appreciate that you showed on Z2 of showing how it would look if it's 30 versus 32. But is there a possibility that you can change the height of each floor instead of making it 9, 8?
There is a possibility. Again, if, you know, if I had the choice of changing the roof pitch versus getting a lower ceiling, I think I would go with the roof pitch, just because, again, that doesn't affect the interior feel or space in the home.
Oh, you'd rather have the roof pitch be at, if you bring it down everything to 8 feet?
A little shallower, right.
Okay.
Yeah. But I appreciate the thought.
And just so it's clear for the record, the applicant is willing to amend the height to comply, but going off of our architect's advice, we proposed the steeper pitch as explained by Ms. Rubb, but if there's any objection, there's no concern with switching to a height that complies.
That's absolutely right.
And it may need to wait for their planner, but certainly we've heard from Christine, and I would concur with her sentiment. I don't think I've ever seen this board grant a height variance on a single-family home.
Yep, okay. While you're up here, I'll just, I'll go one by one, open it up to the public if anyone has any questions, just for the architect, just for questions at this time. Seeing none. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next witness is Timothy Laurie, the applicant's professional engineer.
Tim, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present before the board concerning this application shall be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, sir, from state names, tell your last name and provide your business affiliation.
Sure. My name is Tim Laurie, L-U-R-I-E. I'm the Director of Engineering at New Lions Engineering in Lakewood, New Jersey. I have appeared in front of this board before.
You're good, sir.
Thank you.
Is there an exhibit you'd like to pull up before we begin?
We could start with the, this exhibit that's on here because it's the...
Okay, I'll ask you to go through the, perhaps describe the existing property, existing conditions of the property, and then move into the proposed subdivision.
Sure. This, this property is an existing one-acre lot known as Lot 11.03, Block 24. The dimensions are 201 by 216.57. It's located on Lyra B Boulevard. The, the house is, the site is undeveloped and wooded. We are located in the R2 zone, and surrounding us are single-family homes. We're, we go to the other sheet that shows the, that one? Sure, thank you. We're proposing to subdivide the lot into two new lots, 1110 and 11.11. Lot 1110 is 21,902 square feet, and Lot 1111 is 21,657 square feet in the R2 zone, which requires 20,000 square-foot lots. Each lot will have its own driveway, as shown on the, shown on the exhibit. We're proposing two five-bedroom houses with three, with a, three cars parking, as shown on the plan, one in the garage and two stacked in front. As you can see, it's a long driveway, they can even stack more cars. We are proposing, well, before I get that, each property will be serviced by wells and septic, and we've done an analysis in the area showing all, laying out all the septics and wells to make sure we're in proper conformance with all the distances approved by the Board of Health for, for the wells and septics.
And that includes soil, soil logs that were...
We did a soil log in the center for a seasonal water table, and we would do additional soil logs for the septic system once, once we go to Board Health approval of the individual lots. We are proposing on this a 50-foot landscape buffer in the rear of the property, and then we're proposing 15-foot buffers, landscape buffers along the side of the property. In addition to the rear buffer of that 50 feet, we're including an additional 15 feet of landscaping to match the sides of the property. of landscaping to match the sides of the property. In addition, we are, we have dry well systems proposed in the rear of each of the houses. We have a 16 by 16.3 concrete patio in the rear of the property. As you see, we locate the septic systems in the front of the property, and we'll have electric and gas from the road into the house, to each of the houses, to provide services for that utility. The project, the overall project is considered a minor development in stormwater. We are disturbing less than an acre of area, and we have less than a quarter acre of new impervious for the two lots. In addition, we are, Lyra B Boulevard, we are proposing sidewalks along the frontage of our site. We are proposing curb along Lyra B Boulevard, which currently doesn't exist. We're going to overlay Lyra B Boulevard. In addition, there is an existing drainage swell that runs between the edge of the existing road and our property line, which we are, which we are going to go in and need some maintenance. We're going to excavate it out a little bit and provide, allow the runoff to continue the same way it's working now into this drainage system with curb cuts along the curb to allow the runoff from the roadway to get into this drainage system that's been existing along the edge of this, edge of the pavement. The, we want to go to the final plat, I would like to go into the bulk requirements. I think it's the first sheet. But if we want to stop there, I just, on the landscaping, I can just... One more, as you see, this is the landscaping in the 15-foot wide strips along the side of the property and along the rear of the property, which we worked with the township forester to spec out these species of trees to provide for this buffer along the perimeter of this, of these two properties. We are also proposing some street trees along the frontage of the property in accordance to township standards. Now, if we can go to Sheet 1, the plat. The zoning criteria for this site, as we talked about, is an R2 zone. It's 20,000 square foot lots. We are proposing Lot 1110 to be 21,902 square feet. Lot 11 is 21,657 square feet. We have a frontage of 101 square feet for Lot 1110. We have a hundred, frontage of 100 feet along Lot 11.11. We have the minimum setback is 50 feet. We set both houses back 79 feet because as a result of having the septic system in the front and having the proper separation distance for the septic systems. The rear setback we have, is taken from the buffer. We provide, it's 30 feet required from the buffer, and if you add the 30 feet plus the 50 feet for the landscape buffer and the 30 feet from a setback, it's 80 feet. The houses need to be set back from the rear of the property, and we're setting them back 82.4 feet. In addition, the impervious coverage of each lot is allowed is 50%. We're allowing only 20% coverage of impervious coverage, which is the house, the driveways, and the patios, for each lot is at 20%. In addition, we have some, we have bulk requirement variances. We have a side, we set the side setback at 20 feet according to the planner's letter. If this was supposed to have a 50-foot buffer and then have additional 20 feet attached to that side setback, we're requesting a variance because we're setting the side setback at 20.97 for each lot versus if we were to provide the buffer, it'd be 70 feet, and the planner will talk more about the justification of that variance. In addition, we previously talked about, we are asking for a height variance for 32 feet for the height, where 30 feet is required. In addition, we have, as part of the approval, we now will have to get the Board of Health approval for the septic systems and soil conservation approval for the lots. We do have county approval right now for this project, and according, and I just want to reference, in CME's review letter, there was dated April 30th, 2025. There were some comments about the, try to save the native species along the frontage of, native species of trees along the frontages of property. We'll certainly try to save whatever trees we can along the frontage. In addition, they talked about the location of the proposed street trees to the sidewalk. We have some room where we can adjust the sidewalk and provide more space in between the sidewalk and the existing street trees. In addition to that, we can comply with all the other comments in CME's review letter.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question. It was probably more appropriate for the architect, but one of the issues we had, this is a five-bedroom home, initially it was six, and when it had come in initially, it had a parking area in the front. So now, that's been eliminated, and it's a single driveway as a scene, but there's two front doors. Is there a reason for that?
Perhaps we could have Ms. Robb address that question.
Then I'll just add, maybe we finish with Mr. Lurie first. So, and you have three parking spaces, but you're utilizing the garage?
We have the garages, one and two, two out in front of the garage.
And it's a five-bedroom home?
Yes.
Can you provide a third? I mean, I looked...
Yeah, we have plenty of room to provide another parking spot, absolutely.
And the swell that's going in along the roadway, ownership and maintenance of that?
That would be owned by each individual lot that's in front of, in front of the swells.
So they're going to, there's going to have an easement on it so that it is...
Yes, we can put an easement on there.
One of the things I'm going to start to recommend is that an O&M manual be, not only prepared, that's required, but that it be filed with the county so that there's no question who is responsible to maintain the system. I had substantial concerns about the drainage swell and it going in, the driveway was crossing it, that is among the reasons why they had a couple planned iterations. So I would recommend that an O&M manual be provided and that a deed restriction be filed with the county for maintenance of that swell.
And that was something we previously discussed, and we agree with.
Would you finally agree to a condition that the basement and the garage areas cannot be converted into additional bedrooms or residential living space?
Yes, absolutely. And that can be made part of a condition of resolution.
Are the buffer areas restricted?
We can certainly provide, we can certainly make it at easement, sure, absolutely.
The goal was to comply as best we could with the buffer requirements, so we'll defer to your guidance as to whether they should be restricted or present any other specific restrictions that should be put in place.
So I would defer to the board, but here's the issue, is that if we're requiring a buffer and it has to be planted, the idea would be to keep that screen up. And so if there's not an easement in place or anything to protect that, a future homeowner could come in and clear, and we wouldn't have that buffer that's required. So I do think it is important that it be restricted. The other thing, which also was in our letter, they indicated there are minor stormwater development, but we're seeing issues where people, even on minor subdivisions, these are smaller lots, but they hit that quarter acre of impervious or they, the one acre of disturbance. So this is one acre total, they're currently under it, but the more and more that they disturb, the closer they get to that threshold. So I would recommend that the board impose that the buffer be put in a conservation easement.
And that still allows us 30 feet of usable yard for each of the houses?
Sure, yeah, there would be no objection to that as a condition. The goal was to create that buffer and have that buffer be permanent, so that's, there's no issue there.
Laura, hasn't, haven't we had other applications like this come to us about chopping up a one-acre lot like this, or less than a one acre, and we, we've been very adamant about not allowing the undersized?
So, Mayor, this is actually a, it's sized appropriately for the zoning. I think one of the issues that we've seen recently is how they meet their justification on the septic. So have they had satisfactory soil logs? Is the design appropriate for this lot? But as it relates to the lot area, it is fully compliant with the zone, so it's not creating an undersized lot.
But it is not, it's not conforming to the buffer requirement.
Okay.
So they do need variance.
But as far as your technical stuff, Laura, you're happy with the technical stuff?
That is correct. I do have one other question for the architect as it relates, and I can ask it of Mr. Lurie, but your family room has closets, which typically would then classify that as a bedroom? And then if it's a six-bedroom house, I'm going to have the same question as it relates to parking.
Well, we're, it confirms that it would be a max five-bedroom, but we can have Ms. Robb address those questions directly.
Well, septic issues too, if there's more bedrooms.
That's correct.
Correct, correct. And again, that's, that could be a condition of approval.
Anything else, Laura?
I have no further questions of this witness.
Christine, you have anything?
Nothing from this witness.
Sherry? Good. What's the depth of groundwater over there? Do you have that?
The soil log we did for this house... I believe it's like six feet, but I want to find the exact number for you. Oh, here it is. So estimated seasonal high water table is 86 inches below the ground.
And what's the existing status of that stormwater feature? Is it in good shape, would you say?
Of the swell that's along the roadway? There currently exists, it's, it has some leaves and mulch that's kind of built up inside it over the years. There's existing gabion baskets that are located along Lyra B Boulevard to kind of slow up the flow. So what we're proposing is to just excavate these out another foot, just to clean them out, so we can be able to utilize the full capacity of them, and we still utilize the same gabion baskets to slow the water as it migrates to the east.
What's directly across the street from these two lots?
There's a...
Can we pull this up on, can we pull this up alive, like an aerial?
It's called Google Earth, Mayor.
Oh, just want, you just want me to go to Google Earth?
I just want to see it on the map.
As long as it's on the computer, I can do that.
There's a room, I forget what that room's called.
Who would be responsible for maintaining those gabions and those other things?
It's just one, it's just one gabion that's located towards the, towards the east right here, so that would be part of this homeowner's lot to maintain that. And it's existing gabion, and we're just moving away from, it's located right now approximately where the driveway was, we're moving it over.
And the next piece of property that's next door to it, there's no curbing in front of that house?
No curbing in front of that.
Just flat?
Just flat. See, there's a, let's see what the road name, Callaway Street is just, is located a little bit to the west of our site. Right there.
And while it's being pulled up, I'll note that the original version of the plan, the applicant had considered requesting a waiver from the requirement to install sidewalks and curbs, but at the recommendations of the board professionals, it is being proposed here, even though there is no, currently no other sidewalk or curb in the area.
Looking at the street elevations here, it's pretty, it's pretty level profile.
Do you want me to go to Lyra B and Callaway?
That's probably one of the closer areas. It's not clearly far.
Mr. P, the only reason I'm asking is I'm concerned if we're going to push water towards the neighbors. You know, I mean, if you're going to main, the...
Yeah, this, our, the existing swell is relatively flat, and I'm maintaining that same, the same flatness, so it fills up and then it moves. The gabion baskets slows the water up, goes through the basket, and then moves, moves to the east. So a lot of this water, once we excavate, clean these drainage ditch out, will infiltrate...
Just stay there?
Yeah, stay there and infiltrate back into the ground.
That's all we're concerned, you know, just concerned about the neighbors too. Right now, it's wooded, it's flowing, but once it gets cleared, it's a different story, right? The groundwater, the trees aren't there to suck up all the, all the water, right?
Since we've been working on this for the last, it's like four or five months, on my way to work, Lyra B Street's right there, so whenever there's heavy rain, I've been driving down just to get an idea of how the drainage patterns go and...
Got the neighbors watering the asphalt road.
So that comes, this is pretty much directly across the street from Callaway?
Correct.
From the new houses, there's those big, those, that was a major subdivision years ago. It's right across the street from that?
It's a little bit to the east, but it's right, right, right off the intersection, yes.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to see the road, I just, you know, I know there's no, there's no sewer, there's no sewers over there.
You guys good? Open up to the public for any questions? Come on up, sir. This is just questions for the engineer. Could you please state your name and your address, please?
Philip Blenger, 286 Merrick Road. Farmingdale, Al. Ready?
Yeah, he's good.
My question is, you said something about along the front that there are endangered trees.
Not endangered trees. I said that we would try to maintain, the board engineer had a comment for us to try to save whatever trees we can along the frontage of our property, so I said we would, we would work to try to save them.
Okay, I thought you had said anything that they were endangered, and I was just wondering why we didn't make it mandatory that they be left there if they're endangered, but if they're not, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Perhaps we'll address those two architectural questions.
Sure.
Moving to our planner, so I'll ask Ms. Robb to return.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Sure, thank you.
I believe the two questions, one was about the second...
Front door.
Front door, and there was another question about, I believe, a door in a, a non, an attic.
Closet in the family room. Yeah, if I could trouble you to just scroll to the first floor plan, I think that would be helpful, yeah. So the, the second front door at the right-hand side is just for convenience. It's an at-grade door, kind of like a garage, you know, right adjacent to the garage, so imagine coming in with groceries and packages, and you kind of don't want to go up the front step, so it's just for convenience to the mudroom, kids coming in with backpacks would go in through that door. Simple as that, you know, it's just kind of a client preference. The closets in the family room, we, you know, we kind of talked about it being a playroom, young children, toy closet, meaning it is not intended at all for a bedroom, it's simply for storage for games, sports equipment, things like that.
How many windows into that room?
In the back, there are three, I believe. I can grab my plan, and some more on the right, yeah. Two more on the right. So again, more of an informal living space as opposed to the combined living room and dining room at the ground floor.
How come both houses have to have the at-grade door? Is it just convenience for both, like when we go to our...
Yeah, I mean, two different families, two, two, convenience for both, yeah, equal opportunity.
Was this, I would recommend, I mean, I understand the testimony, but that the board clearly state that this can't be converted to a two-family?
Absolutely, that would, no, no issue with that. Absolutely, that would, no, no issue with stating that for the record or putting that on the record, yeah.
And then I would, I would also recommend to the board that obviously is noted with the septic, that this be a restricted five-bedroom.
Again-
Where's the design for the basement? Is there a walkout, side steps, walkout? Or is there just, there's nothing?
Nothing.
Access from the interior?
Just interior access, unfinished basement at this time, yeah.
No steps walking down?
That's correct, none at all.
Inside?
That's right.
Yeah, because, I'm gonna be honest with you.
Sure.
It looks and feels like a two-family.
That is not, that is not at all the intention. Yeah.
One thing, present the way you are, not even look at the plans and see it the way we see it, but, you know.
Again, no, no separate access to the basement from the exterior, and that second door is, is like a, you could envision as a side door for convenience, at-grade side door for convenience.
Your plan kind of shows, I mean, maybe it's just an illusion that I'm seeing.
Mm-hmm.
This, that's the window well.
Yeah, for the basement.
Got it.
Yeah, that, those are all window wells, that's correct.
And so there's no door to get out the patios above?
No.
How are the windows designed? Are they like those emergency egress with like the ladder coming out of the window well, or no?
No, and at the basement?
Yeah.
No, that's, they're just for light and, you know, some ventilation at the basement, but no, you know, no ladder or anything like that.
They look like full-size, they're full-size egress, what it is.
Meaning for safety, one could climb out, but the intention is, again, just for light air ventilation, it's an unfinished basement.
Laura, what's the, you can't have two front doors, correct? In this town?
We really don't have any regulation that states you can't.
Many months ago, when I purchased my house, I had two front doors, and I was told I had to remove my second door. In Howell. So that's my question, and-
I will say that if, again, if this is a, if the board finds it troublesome or an issue, we're happy to amend the plan to remove it.
If there's, I mean, listen, if there's nothing preventing it, but the rumblings in town were that, and if it's not on the records, or it's not a, you know, law or regulation, then there's really nothing we can do, but, you know, people are under the impression you cannot have two front doors in this town.
Did you put it on the side coming into the mudroom, so people could go up along the other side?
Um, yeah, that's a possibility.
Well, isn't there a door on the garage side?
There is a door, yeah, there's a door that's directly into the garage.
So that-
Um, the, the door in the front connects a little nicer to the, to the driveway, so, you know, again, that, that was the intention.
And you also enter the house from the garage, correct?
Yes, you can.
I just don't understand that second front door.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
These plans were prepared conceptually in response to requests from the board professionals. To be clear, the intention is this will be a single-family residence, we agreed to cap the bedrooms at five bedrooms, and we're willing to memorialize, memorialize that any way the board requests. As to the second front door, again, it's conceptual, if there's a concern, even though it's not a restriction, the applicant would have no issue removing it or modifying it so that the board's comfortable. It's, it's not, I get to tell you, it's not a critical part, these were really just conceptual plans. If that's helpful for the board, it can certainly be removed.
Laura, with regard to that family room, with the way the closets and windows are currently, would that be considered a legal bedroom?
Based upon the way I look at it, it would meet the definition of a bedroom.
I would agree.
The family, yeah, we could remove the closets in the family room, but it's also not, not an issue at all.
Anybody else? Laura, you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
But just to summarize, I mean, we hear the concerns, and if there's any proposed or suggested modifications, the applicant wants to make sure the board feels comfortable that this is a single-family residence capped at five bedrooms, those modifications can absolutely be made, removing the family room doors, removing the second front bedroom door.
I just want to ask a quick question, just because the testimony was that you would use this door to have access to the mudroom, but these are stairs here, correct?
Yeah.
So either way, if I'm coming in with packages and I want to get to the kitchen, I'm gonna come in the door and still have to go upstairs?
Again, sure, I mean, I could just imagine on a rainy day, you want to get in as quick as possible, run to the closest door, dump the bags, and then take it from-
Wouldn't you go in through the garage if it's raining?
You could, you could do that too, that's true, you know, more than one car. It's really just a convenience, but not a sticking point at all, we're, we're glad to amend the plan, you know, to the board's satisfaction.
I, I would recommend just getting rid of that second door.
That's fine.
No issue.
Okay.
Make the garage a little wider there too, right? Actually use that space?
Perhaps.
Putting any sheds in the backyards or seasonal storage?
I'll let Tim.
There's none proposed at this time.
Anybody else? Uh, he's got one more person, right?
Yep, we have our, we'll move to our professional planner.
All right.
Ask that he be sworn.
Justin, good evening.
Justin, do you swear to affirm the testimony you have presented to the board concerning this application shall be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, your name and business situation, please?
Justin Ossiello, A U C I E L L O, principal with Kefon Consulting Group, Red Bank. Licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I've appeared in front of this board on many occasions and-
You're good, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
You've heard the testimony, we'll ask that you summarize the relief that's being requested and put on the proofs for the record.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So as you heard from the, the prior witnesses, we are largely compliant with bulk requirements, the only variance relative, the only compliance is for building height, however, as stated in the May 7, 2025 letter from Avakian, there are multiple variances that are required for the buffer. And before I go any further, I just think it's important for the purposes of the record and, and also for, for the board's understanding, is that there are two definitions of subdivision in the township ordinance. The first is major, which is very typical of many of their municipalities, a major subdivision is all subdivisions that are not minor. So, so if you're not a minor, you're a major. The definition of a, of a minor subdivision is, is any subdivision containing not more than three lots, in this instance, the applicant proposes two lots. Number two, not involving any new street or road or the extension of off-track improvements. This application uses the street and not proposing any, any onsite improvements, utility improvements, but what's, what is triggering this as a, as a minor subdivision is that this is not involving any property which is formerly part of a tract or which subdivision approval has been previously granted that divides the original tract into three or more lots. So in this instance, we are a major subdivision because the property is a result of a previously granted subdivision. So the reason why the variance is required is because there was a parent lot at, at one time, there was a subdivision of multiple lots, and now this lot was a part of that subdivision. So now we're in front of you this evening to subdivide this lot into two separate parcels. I think it's really important, before I go on, that, that's the only reason why we are triggering the, the variance for this, which is, which is, you know, resulting in, in multiple variances that relate to, you know, to buffering. I think it's also important to, to state from your master plan, master plan states that the intent of the buffer is to promote the protection of neighborhood characteristics by enforcing buffer areas between non-residential and residential areas. And then it goes on to say that, that the township currently has buffer requirements as found Section 18863 of the town's land use ordinance to separate residential areas from any non-residential development and to protect agricultural uses. These standards are enforced at the time of subdivision or site plan approval, and this remains a goal, an ongoing goal. Again, the applicant is proposing subdivision of one residential property that is adjacent to other residential properties. So I think, you know, from a planning standpoint, what is proposed is, what's, what's required is a buffer variance, however, these are residential to residential, it's not an instance where it's commercial to residential. So going back to the Avakian letter, again dated May 7, on page two is the, the table of the, the bulk requirements. Again, the variance is triggered for the building height, the side yard setback variance is required as well, but that's really part and parcel to the buffer variance, and Mr. Laurie had gone through those numbers. So beginning on, on page three, there are a number of variances that are listed for the buffer, of course, the buffer requirement, when you add on to, to the side yard, which would be fifty plus twenty point nine seven, results in a, in a side yard buffer of, of seventy feet for both properties. Going on the separate section on a buffer requirements, it says that the applicant is proposing a fifty, a fifteen-foot buffer along the eastern, western, and northern property lines of the existing lot, no buffer is proposed on the southern property frontage on the roadway, variance is required. The next one, it says, the applicant does not comply with requirement for the side yard setback. The next one, a number, a letter C, is the, is the buffer for the, for the driveway grading and, and, and septic that are proposed in the front buffer area. I think it's really important to, when you look at the impact of this buffer, it's important to look about the character of the surrounding area, not just the entire surrounding area, but also the immediate surrounding. And what I mean by that is that this board, about four years ago, granted approval for subdivision on, on Block 24, Lot 11.04, which is the property that's adjacent. That, that subdivision, that was, that was one lot that was subdivided into two lots, is almost identical in terms of, of, you know, bulk requirements that's proposed this evening. So from a planning standpoint, I always look to see how this stacks up to the character of the surrounding area, and when I see a lot that's adjacent to this lot, which is almost identical in terms of, of bulk character, you know, I would say that it's, it's highly consistent with that character. And again, the buffer is really intended in terms of the policy guidance from the master plan to separate residential properties from commercial. In addition, my office did look into the character of, of the surrounding area in terms of, of lot sizes, again, these are not, you know, undersized lots, these lots do meet the, the minimum lot requirement, but, but just to continue on with the theme of consistency with the character, you know, of the area, on Block 24, there are thirty single-family homes. The average lot size is approximately thirty-two thousand square feet, and the median lot size is approximately twenty-four thousand seven hundred, and there is one, one outlier of about eighty-seven thousand square feet. When you remove that outlier, which is Block 24, Lot 1102, the average lot size is, is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-three square feet and a, and a median lot size of twenty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-five square feet. So these lots are just shy of about twenty-two thousand square feet, so these lots are consistent with the character of the area. Of those, of those thirty lots, forty-three percent of those lots have a lot area of less than twenty thousand square feet, and fifty-seven percent have a lot area of greater than twenty thousand and one square feet. Again, these are lot sizes that are compatible with the character of the area as well. And also, we don't need a variance for the lot frontage, but we are generally consistent, you know, with the character of the area, where the median frontage is a hundred thirty-two feet. In terms of what I see as the positive criteria in this application, I would go to the purposes of zoning that are advanced in conjunction with this application, and I would start with, with Purpose C of the Minnesota Land Use Law, which speaks to the provision of light air and open space. Again, the applicant proposes lot sizes that meet the minimum lot size requirement and can accommodate single-family dwellings that comply with the, with the setbacks, even though there is the variance setback for the side yard, which again is, is in conjunction with the buffer requirement. These new lots and the proposed homes will not impede the surrounding properties on light air and open space, and the one thing that I always go to on that is the coverage, we do not need a variance for coverage, and as you heard from, from Mr. Laurie, this application can accommodate, you know, appropriately the, the stormwater runoff. Purpose E, promotion of appropriate population densities. This applicant proposes a density that's aligned with the character of the surrounding area. The density that is proposed is approximately for, for eleven point oh one, two dwelling units to the acre, and the other lot is approximately two point oh four dwelling units to the acre. Block 24 is approximately one point five dwelling, dwelling units to the acre, so it is slightly higher, but it's still, you know, generally consistent with the character of the density in the area. Purpose G, which speaks to the provision of sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, in this instance, residential, this is a permitted use in, in the zone, the governing body has, has contemplated this use as appropriate, you know, for this property, and as I had stated previously under Purpose C, it's my professional opinion that what's proposed, there's, there's sufficient space to accommodate. And Purpose I, which speaks to a, is our revision environment, you did hear from the architect who, who did show the, the design of, of the elevations and the interior, and I, I think they really, you know, speak for themselves, I think the aesthetics here are gonna, you know, be, be consistent with the character of this area, and I should mention that going out throughout this area, there are a lot of single-family homes, and there are some newer single-family homes, and, and I think this is going to be consistent with, with that character. In terms of, of the negative criteria, the first prong is a showing of whether or not there would be a substantial, a negative detriment to the public good. I did talk about the character of the area in terms of, of the various data, and certainly what you have in front of you is, is, are, you know, two lots that are consistent, so it's my professional opinion that if the board so chooses to, to approve this application, it's not a great situation where you're gonna have a inconsistency in character, which would be a, a negative impact to the community. You know, the buffering, even though, of course, the buffering requirement is not met, you know, per the ordinance, and that goes back to the, the definition of the subdivision in this instance, you did see from the site plan that's up, you know, there is, in my opinion, you know, sufficient landscaping and, and land area to attenuate any potential negative impacts that the board may see. Certainly, I don't see any substantial negative impact in this application. And lastly, in terms of, of the second prong, whether there's gonna be a substantial impairment to the zone plan and, and the zoning ordinance, the purpose of the R2 and the R3 zones is to permit infill development at moderate densities within established centers identified to the Howell Township master plan. As I had stated, obviously, this is a permitted use, we're here at the planning board, but the density at approximately two, you know, two to the acre is, is in, you know, my opinion, i- if not moderate, on the lower side, but more importantly, it's generally consistent with the character of the properties in, in Block 24. You know, so with all that said, certainly, I think the benefits of this application, when you do the balancing here, certainly outweigh the detriments, and if there are any detriments, I don't see from a planning standpoint them being, you know, detrimental to the community.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, so, um, Justin, I think, talked a bit about the proposed development being consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding. with the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding area, but I think we've talked about how this board typically does not grant variances for the height of single-family homes. I think there's really no reason to grant that height variance. They're proposing a nine-feet-high unfinished basement, so they could even lose some height there if they're worried about the slope of the roof or something like that. And this board typically also does not grant buffer relief either from any application. So while the proposed subdivision is, you know, conforming with all the bulk requirements of the lot, it is not conforming with the buffer requirements, so that would ultimately be the board's decision. If you do choose to act favorably on the application, I would recommend requiring that the closets be removed from the family room, that second front door be removed, the restriction that you can't have more than five bedrooms be placed on the home, and that an easement be put on the buffer.
Okay. Any questions?
She spoke about it. She spoke about it. Yeah, and the height.
The height of the basement. They got a foot of basement to knock the height of the...
You have to take out like...
Well, doesn't necessarily have to be the basement. It just has to hit the...
Is your applicant okay with knocking the height down of the roof?
The applicant's willing to modify the height so that it complies, so there's no variance relief for the height. Correct.
So Christine, based on Justin's testimony, the buffer requirements are basically a result of what happened in the past to create this.
That's correct. This was part of, this property is the result of a subdivision at some point in the past.
Right.
So because it's being subdivided further, that's, it's creating a major subdivision.
Got it.
And just to shed a little more light on that, we did an Oprah request to determine the subdivision history of this property, and we found two prior resolutions. There was one from 1990, which was the prior subdivision. It was a two-lot subdivision, which I believe created this lot. There was also one from the 1970s, which, it didn't provide much information, but that's the subdivision history. It's been quite some times since there's been any action.
Okay.
And each time, was it still a total of two?
Yes. Yeah, the one from the 1970s, actually, I don't think specified within the resolution how many lots were created, but it was identified as a minor subdivision, so I would assume it was two. And then the one in 1990 was a two-lot subdivision.
Was the lot that Justin referenced that is almost identical to this one, that Lot 1104, did that have any buffer issues that you know of? Or Justin, I don't know if you found that in your...
I did. I found a review letter from late, let me see, I have it right here, gosh, 2021, I believe it was. And then there was an extension granted in August 2023. Sorry, if you just, bear with me, Mr. Chair.
So that was when we were all virtual, right?
Yeah, so this was, I have a review from CME dated June 17th, 2021, and it says, I don't have my glasses with me, so it says, "The existing is the resulting lot from a previous subdivision, and therefore, the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval." This review letter from CME does not reference a buffer variance. It references, it references variances for existing conditions, and it says, "The applicant indicates the following variance is required for this application." It says, "The minimum required side yard setback is 20 feet, whereas the existing dwelling is setback 17.8 feet for the proposed property line bisecting lots 11.041 and 11.042. No additional variances appear necessary with this application." And that's it. So that application does not require, or I mean, I'm not sure what happened at the hearing, but just going off this June 17th, 2021, letter from CME, there was no...
Is that an engineering review letter or a planning review letter?
This, it was from you, Laura.
Right, so I respectfully, I'm the board engineer, and we don't know what would have occurred at the hearing, which would have required resolution. I vaguely remember that subdivision, and I know we talked about the buffer, but just for context purposes, it could have very easily have been in the board planner's report, and you should really be referencing the resolution. And if it wasn't, it should have been, because it would have the same condition.
Right, I'm not trying to say that...
Oh, no, no, I understand.
But the, you know what document that I did find doesn't reference that? But I think my point was, and that's not something that I was going to bring up in my direct, but I think the point is, is that what was proposed back then in terms of the bulk requirements is extremely consistent, if not, you know, identical in some instances. So in terms of how this relates to the character of not just the area, but what's right next door, it's almost the same thing.
Right. Okay.
And Christine, there was one thing that I think I misspoke. I think I said that this was a minor subdivision earlier.
A major, so...
But it's a major, of course.
We all knew what you meant.
Okay, thanks.
But thank you.
Just for the record.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Good. Christine, Sherry, Laura, anything?
Nothing further.
Okay. I'll open up to the public for any questions. Seeing none, okay. Any questions from the public at all, or any comments relating to this application? Jared, this is your last expert?
Correct, yes.
Of course. Yeah, Tim, I think you're going to be, he wants to have some questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sorry, I had some more questions about the septic I didn't get to, thought of after you left. Is, what kind of septic systems are these? Do they have a dosing tank, or are they just gravity-fed, I guess is my question?
It's going to be either or. I'm not positive. We're going to try gravity first, absolutely.
Okay. So no soil logs have been done where the proposed fields are, though?
Only where the house, right in the center of the house there.
Did you submit to the county for approval?
We did submit to the county, and we showed them the separation distances of all the septics in the surrounding area, and then they, they basically, they approved it, but they said that that was fine, and they said when we go for our septic permits that we need to do soil logs witnessed by them, et cetera, and do the plan.
Okay, so they've approved the size of the field and the location relative to the wells and wells on other properties?
Yeah, we did a whole, it's on the, probably on sheet four of this set or five, it shows all the circles with all the different septics right there. All the different septics in the area to show that we're not overlapping onto any of the, for the proper separations between wells and septics.
So directly behind this property is Alexander Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Behind it is two homes back up there.
That's correct, yeah.
With their septics?
Yeah. We located all this, we did an Oprah request through the Health Department to get all the records of the septics and wells, and then we submit that back to the Health Department.
What are you using the dry wells for, just out of curiosity?
The dry wells for the roof runoff.
Roof, just to recharge?
Just recharge, yeah, the water quality store.
Does there a distance those have to be away from the well at all, or no?
Not the well, the septics.
No, I know, but is the, does the dry well have to be a certain distance away from the well, is my question?
Oh, I believe that has to be 50 feet away.
Okay, those dark boxes are the dry wells?
Yes, correct.
It's okay for wells to be that close to each other?
Yes.
I wasn't aware of that, just curious. So what happens if you go to, like, perk the septic field and, like, the soil's there or the water table's higher in that spot, and the field has to be expanded in size? Is that a possibility at all?
Well, it could, well, if it's soil replacement, then you do an extra two feet around the edge of the bed. You can also do a mounded system, which mounds it up when you have a high water table.
Yeah, that was my, are they mounded over in that area, or, you know, like the other houses?
I'm not sure.
Okay. You don't know how big, like, the actual tank is yet, because the system hasn't been designed?
Well, it's going to be less than the 2,000 gallons, but it's probably 13, I think that we have on the plans, we talked about flows being, I forget, 1,300?
Can you go back to the slide with, like, the distances, like, all the circles and the distances from everything?
So with the septic, I believe it's 300 for the first bedroom, 150 for each additional bedroom, so you're looking 450, 750.
I guess, I mean, ultimately, where my line of questions, I'm just concerned, like, what if you go to design the system and the system can't fit or needs to be expanded in some way, because it just seems super tight the way everything is? Is that a possibility at all? And then what happens?
If it happens and it modifies the subdivision, they'd have to come back to the board.
Okay. Okay, well, that was like my main question, so...
As a condition of approval, we'd have to secure all outside agencies, this being one of them, so if we were unable to secure that approval, we'd have to make some modifications and possibly come back here.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
All right. All right, Jared, I think that's it. I opened to the public. There was no comment or questions. I think we're good here. Professionals are good. Do you have any closing remarks?
Sure. Yeah, just, you've seen the plans, and as I mentioned at the beginning, there's been quite a bit of collaboration between the applicant, the applicant's professionals, and your professionals. You've heard all this, but just to kind of highlight some of the changes that have taken place, initially, there was a request for a waiver from sidewalk. We agreed to add the sidewalk and curb at the recommendation. The buffer in the rear was increased to meet the full 50 feet requirement. The applicant agreed to cap the bedrooms at five. It was originally requested at six. We added the garage. We provided architecturals, and we had an opportunity to walk the site with Mestero and incorporate her landscaping comments. So that all took place over the past seven or eight months, and just, you know, a lot of work gets to, goes into it to get to this point, so I wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear to the board. And just to reiterate some of the commitments made tonight, the applicant is willing to remove the height variance to keep the height compliant with the zone, and that was depicted in the exhibit from this rub. I mean, the houses essentially look very similar, it's just a modified roof line, so there's no issue, no issue there. With regard to the buffer, it was noted that, you know, the master plan states that the intent is really to separate residential and non-residential properties, but there's, we're still proposing a buffer, and as suggested by Ms. Newman, we're happy to put that in an easement so that it stays a landscaped buffer on a permanent basis. So we're happy to memorialize that as requested. And with regard to the concerns with architecture, just to be clear, this would be a single-family home. If there's any concern about the closets in the family room, those could be removed. If there's any concern about that second front entrance, that can be removed, and we're happy to memorialize that as a condition of approval or any other way that the board would recommend. So those were just my final closing remarks.
All right, thank you. Okay, gentlemen. Any questions, or I will entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion for approval for all those conditions.
So we are making, Mr. Mercer's making a motion for approval with all of the things discussed on record. Do we have to go through a list of them, or no? With everything that we've discussed? Thumbs up, we're good.
The front door, the closet.
Yep. Single-family home, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nadel. All right, Eileen.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Councilman Nadel.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
Mr. Beto.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jared. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we begin our next and final application for this evening.
Oh, thank you.
All right, we are going to go back on record. This is for case number SD 3021, A Life Residential LLC, the residences at Foreman Farms, for preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan approval. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. Always good to be here. Rob Simon from Herald Law here on behalf of the applicant, A Life Residential LLC. As this board is aware, A Life is the contract purchaser of the subject property that consists of approximately 30 acres, located Oakerson and Howell Roads, 29 Howell Road, Block 164, Lot 5.01. We are here tonight for preliminary and final approval. We propose the construction of 280 residential units with a 20% set aside for 58 deed-restricted affordable housing residential units that will be available to low and moderate income households in lieu of constructing two warehouse buildings constituting over 424,000 square feet in size, for which the applicant in control previously obtained planning board approval from this board in accordance with the terms and conditions of a resolution issued by this board on April 13th, 2023. As this board is aware, A Life and the town have entered into a developers' agreement as approved by the mayor and council to construct up to 58 affordable housing units as part of this project to assist the township in meeting its fourth round affordable housing obligation of 304 affordable housing units, so that the township may retain immunity from builder's remedy litigation. And under the developers' agreement, the township is including the property and this development as a component of its housing element and fair share plan, which is required to be adopted by the township per state law by June 30th of 2025. As part of all of this, the township proceeded with the rezoning of the property through the introduction and adoption of an ordinance, creating what we're going to refer to this evening as the ML-15 Zone, which fully permits the development of this application at the property in conformance with the applicable zoning standards. Accordingly, we're here for preliminary and final major site plan approval, preliminary and final major subdivision approval. We are fully compliant, excuse me, with the ML-15 bulk standards. We believe that no variances or waivers are required in connection with this application. We'll get into the particulars shortly. So what we're planning to do here is to demolish the existing structures on the property, subdivide the property into approximately 264 residential lots, and create a residential project that we are calling the Residences at Foreman Farms, which is an inclusionary residential development, 280 for sale residential units, including 224 three-bedroom market-rate townhomes, 56 affordable stacked townhome units within approximately 38 buildings, along with associated improvements, roadway, sidewalk, signage, utilities, et cetera, that we'll get into through the testimony this evening. The project also intends to rely on an onsite pump station, an offsite pump station, and a sanitary sewer route that we will get into, even though, as I stated, the applicant doesn't require, we don't believe we require, any variances... Even though, as I stated, the applicant doesn't require, we don't believe we require any variances, design waivers or exceptions, uh, to the extent that the board deems that they may be required at the conclusion of our, um, presentation or throughout our presentation, certainly we will request such relief as well as any other relief that the board deems necessary or required, uh, prior to, uh, consideration of voting on the application.
Rob, let me stop you there. Are we good for those?
Um, we've recently received, uh, correspondence from the board professionals, including from Ms. Newman's office, Ms. Beam's office, and we intend to address all comments as well as any other comments raised during the course of the proceeding through the testimony presented. We have four witnesses. We have Leanne Hoffman of Hammer Land Engineering, one of the engineers on the project, Bill Feinberg, the architect on the project, Joe Fischinger, uh, our traffic and circulation consultant, and Justin Osceola, who you just heard from, uh, recently, our professional, uh, planner. We also have, um, Joe Torlucci and Ray Walker of Colliers, who can discuss any environmental, uh, issue that may arise. Um, we, I guess, just finally ask, uh, the board that have our witnesses to complete their testimony before allowing questions from the public. Um, I was gonna ask if the board accepts jurisdiction, but we already covered that from Mr. McNamara. So with that, I'd like to have Ms. Hoffman, uh, sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present to the board concerning this application will be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, ma'am, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business affiliation.
Leanne R. Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N-N, Senior Project Manager at VHB Engineering.
Ms. Hoffman, could you please provide the board with your, uh, credentials, occupation affiliation, areas of expertise, and license and experience in the field of engineer?
Sure. Leanne R. Hoffman, Senior Project Engineer at VHB Engineering, um, graduate of Rutgers College of Engineering, um, plus 30-plus years of experience in the civil engineering field, both on the public and private side. I have had the opportunity to testify before this board and numerous other boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I have served as the Township Engineer in Neptune Township and in Barnegat Township. I have served as the Zoning and Planning Board Engineer in East Brunswick Township. I am currently, uh, Licensed Professional Engineer in New Jersey, Professional Planner, Certified Municipal Engineer, and Certified Public Works Manager. Do you want me to?
No. We asked that Ms. Hoffman be deemed qualified, uh, as a professional engineer.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoffman, you prepared the, uh, the engineering plans in connection with this application?
Yes, I have.
And do you have any exhibits that you intend to use in your testimony that have not been yet submitted to the board?
No, I do not.
Um, so why don't you just get going and describe for us the existing and proposed, uh, conditions of the site, um, paying particular attention to the various, um, engineering site plan sheets that you provided?
Sure. Exhibit one, uh, which is up on the screen now, shows the current site, which we've identified as block 164, lot 5.01, bordered on the north by Oakerson Road and Michael Curtin Lane, and on the south by Hal Road.
Okay. Is it, Leanne, is this part of the, uh, engineering package, or should we mark this separately?
This is part of the exhibit that was provided to the board, exhibit one.
Okay. So why don't we, um, mark this separately?
This will be A29 on the exhibit list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So A29 will be, uh, aerial plan. Colored. Go ahead.
Okay. No problem. As Mr. Simon stated, this is in the SED one zone with the ML-15 overlay, which is an inclusionary zone for the affordable housing component of the township. When you look at the aerial map, you'll see to the north, uh, very proximate to the site, to the northwest are the township baseball fields. Directly across the street in the SED's one zone is existing, um, industrial commercial. To the northeast and along Highway 33 is the HD four zone, which comprises, uh, various commercial and industrial uses. To the direct east of the site are existing residential uses, and on the south portion of the site, across Hal Road, is the Swim Club, um, and other uses, um, commercial and industrial along Highway 33 local. The site, again, is approximately 29 acres. It has existing barn structures on the site. It's currently a farmed site. The topography of the site varies across the site from east to west, approximately elevation 148, and then going to the west to approximately elevation 131. I just wanna take a minute to go through the zoning of the site. Again, the zoning of the site is the ML-14. This project is totally compliant.
ML-15.
Oh, ML-14. My other project was ML-14, sorry. ML-15, for the record. Um, this project is totally compliant with the ML-15 zoning. It allows 280, uh, 290 units, of which we're proposing 280. We have 56, um, affordable units, which is a mix of integrated affordable units that are throughout the site as required. 12 of those units are townhouse units, and 44 of those units are stacked units. The townhouse units are three-bedroom, and the stacked units vary between one and two-bedroom. The remainder of the units on the site are market-rate units with three bedrooms. The maximum number of, um, units per building, as per the zoning, is 10. We comply with that. No more than 10 units per building. The maximum building length allowed in the ML-15 is 240 feet. We provide less than that at 224 feet. We meet the building setback from the right-of-way and exceed that. We meet the, um, building setback from the off-street parking areas and exceed that. We meet the building setback from all internal streets. Front-to-front distance between buildings, we exceed that. 60 feet is required, and 80 is provided. We meet the side-to-side distance between buildings, the side-to-front, side-to-rear, we meet and exceed the rear-to-rear between buildings, 23 feet where 20 is allowed. We meet the lot width at 20 feet. We exceed the lot depth. 65 feet is required, and 67 feet is proposed. We are significantly under the building coverage. There was an allowable building coverage for the tract of 35%. We are at 22.72%, and we are significantly under the impervious area coverage, which is allowed at 60%, and we are at 51.43%. The maximum building height is 45 feet, and the proposed is less than 45 feet. Excuse me, one second while I continue. Can you go to the, um, would you mind going to the site plan? Thanks. Access to the site is provided at two points of access, one to the north along Oakerson Road, and one to the south along Hal Road. This is compliant with the RSIS. Along Oakerson Road, we have approximately 425 feet of frontage, to where we're providing curbing and sidewalk along that frontage. We have approximately 623 feet of frontage along Michael Curtin Lane, and we have 743 feet of frontage along Hal Road, to which we are also providing curb and sidewalk along Hal Road. There's a small dedication of right-of-way you'll see on the, um, eastern, northeastern, southeastern portion of the site, northeastern portion of Hal Road, that's required in order to be compliant with the master plan and the road width. In addition, along the perimeter roadways, you'll see that the applicant is proposing to mill and overlay a significant portion of these perimeter roads beyond their frontage. Um, on, on one road, it's over 3,000 linear feet, and on the other road, it's 1,700 linear feet. On Hal Road, the mill overlay proposed goes from the right-of-way of Highway 33 all the way northeast to Local 33, and on Oakerson Road, it goes same distance, same length from 33 all the way out to Local 33.
And, and Leanne, the exhibit that you're referencing is part of the overall site plan, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry, that would be exhibit two. Do we need to?
Um, well, if it's the same as the, um, overall plan sheet, which I believe it is, I don't, we don't need to mark it.
Just specify the sheet, that's all. It's already been admitted.
Should be sheet three.
Yeah. I think it is sheet three, according to.
Yes. SP three. So I, I went over the access from both, um, Oakerson and Hal Road. The roadways are interior designed to be RSIS compliant, which they are. Two of the roads have a 30-foot wide cartway and parking on, on the side and in front of the units. The other two roads have a 24-foot wide cartway. All the roads have a 50-foot right-of-way on the site. The utilities for the site will all come out to Hal Road. That would be, um, gas would tie into the existing gas line. Water is looped throughout the site, comes out to Hal Road, and will tie in to a proposed 20-inch water line. The sanitary sewer on-site all flows by gravity to a pump station that's located on-site, um, and then will tie into a force main that's proposed on Hal Road. As I said before, the site drains basically east to west. In accordance with the RSIS and the DEP, we have to mimic those drainage patterns, and we have to reduce. The site proposes 17 stormwater management facilities. Um, 13, 14 of them are small-scale bio-retention basins. One of them is a large-scale bio-retention base, excuse me, one of them is a large-scale infiltration basin, and two of them are large-scale, uh, bio-retention basins. The parking, um, on the site exceeds what is required per RSIS. There are 758 spaces that are required. We are proposing 958 spaces. In addition, um, guest spaces, which are always a concern and a thought for developments of this type, the requirement is 140 spaces, and we are proposing 184 guest parking spaces, which is 33% more than what is required.
Any handicap?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. With respect to landscaping, um, the beauty of the bio-retention basins is that there is landscaping proposed within the basin, so you're not looking at, uh, just a grassed area. This is exhibit, um, excuse me, exhibit three? Do we need to mark that?
So this is, this is a separate colored rendering, so why don't we mark this as 830?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
And what are we gonna call this?
This is the colored rendering, site rendering?
Please proceed.
Thank you. So as you can see, what we've, what we've done on this plan is show, A, the perimeter buffer that's required around the site. Um, it's been landscaped as per the ordinance. We've worked with the township professionals and with Sherry in particular. Um, in addition, again, with the bio-retention basins, they're landscaped also, so you're not just getting like a maintenance problem or an area that has to be mowed. The landscape plan is very robust. It proposes over 1,500 trees, 3,151 shrubs, and 3,000 plants and ground covers. The lighting on the, on the, uh, plan, in accordance with the lighting plan in the site plan set, are mounted at 16 feet high. They're decorative lights, LED lights. Um, they would have a photo cell on them, no glass, so they're dark sky, um, lights.
Are they all LED fixtures?
Yes. They are.
And you say dark side, there's dark sky compliant, correct?
Compliant, yes.
And then they're overseen by the HOA, or Urban Specialty Maintenance, in terms of repair and replacement?
Yes, this will be subject to, to an HOA.
The, um, the recycling and refuse pickup would be curbside. Um, the market-rate units and the 12 affordable townhouse units all have garages, so they would have their cans and recycling in the garages. On the stacked affordables, we've provided on the outside a six-and-a-half by five-foot corral, um, for the recycling, which would go out curbside and would be picked up, um, within the development. The development with respect to the stormwater, just to take a step back, as I said, has to be compliant with RSIS and NJDEP seven colon eight best management practices. So we have, um, run all the storms. We have infiltrated and recharged as appropriate and where required. We've met all the reductions, and this application is compliant with those standards also. We have two signs proposed, um, at the site, one at each entrance. Um, they're ground-mounted monument signs. There's a detail on sheet SP 37. Um, those signs are compliant with the, uh, sign ordinance. I just wanna go over, um, the permitting for the site. The site has an NJDEP LOI. There are no wetlands present on the site. The site is not in a flood zone. We have Monmouth County Board of Health review, uh, memo dated April 23rd, 2025. We have Monmouth County, uh, review memo and a planning board hearing on 5/27. We have submitted to Free Old Soils and received comments, and we submitted back just recently last week. We have received preliminary sewer and water approval from Hal Township, and that basically summarizes the permitting. There were some, um, comments that came up in the CME review letter with respect to mailbox location.
So you're, it's okay. I apologize. You're referring to the CME associates' letter dated May 2nd, 2025?
Correct.
And you'd like, and you'd like to touch upon some of the items that were, were called out in that letter?
Correct.
Please proceed.
Thank you. One of the, one of the items called out in the letter, um, had to do with the mailbox clusters throughout the site, which are now required, um, in new developments. And we have seven that are required throughout the site, uh, which is compliant, and everyone has a mailbox. However, there was a comment that asked us to provide more throughout the site so they'd be more proximate to the units. We do not have a problem, um, adhering to that request. The issue we typically have is with the postmaster. They like less, um, but we understand the comment, and we'd be happy to provide more mailbox clusters throughout the site. One of the, um, other comments that came up was the parking proximate to the affordable units. So the stacked units have three parking spaces in front of them, and then we have, um, as I stated earlier, more than ample guest parking throughout the site development. So if, in fact, there is another car, um, associated with one of the 44 stacked units, they would have to walk two buildings, which is 40 feet, and then another 20 to 30 feet. So if someone had to park further away from the affordable unit, it would be within 60 feet or so, which we believe is proximate, and it meets the intent of the RSIS. There was a question also with respect to, um, whether or not we accounted for the exterior patios on the site within the, um, drainage calculations, which we did. Um, all the patios that are shown on the plan have been accounted for, for impervious area, um, with the drainage calculations. We concur with, um, Sherry's comments with respect to landscaping. There was some substitutions requested, um, and we don't take any exception to those landscaping comments that are also in the CME letter. I, I did, uh, skip over, I should step back to the parking again. Um, the parking spaces are nine by 18, which are compliant with the RSIS, and there was a question in the review letter, both, I think, in the planning and maybe the CME letter, whether or not a design waiver was required because Hal Township has an ordinance that requires 18 feet. Our position is, uh, 19 feet, excuse me.
That requires 19 feet.
Excuse me. Thank you. Our position is that RSIS requires nine by 18 feet, and we're compliant with the RSIS.
And in fact, in the ML-15 ordinance in, in two separate locations, it actually states with regard to parking that the RSIS requirements preempt any other requirements in the zone, correct?
Correct. There was another concern, um, on two buildings with respect to the driveway location, um, and the lot line. The ML-15 ordinance allows for a three-foot driveway setback to the lot line, um, just based on scaling and the size of the lines on the plan. Um, we could meet the three-foot setback. It's a, like, 2.8, so we do not have a problem meeting the setback for those two buildings with the driveway setback, so we would- with the driveway setback, so we would not require any variance or relief for that either.
And the plans will be adjusted accordingly?
Yes.
For the parking, could you go back and cover the ADA departments? How many spaces were there being located? How many are van accessible or EV made ready?
So the EV-ready spaces throughout the site are 66, EV-ready spaces as required. The ADA spaces, I would just have to take a moment to count them on the plan, but they are compliant.
Pat, would you like her to do that now or?
Sometime before she finishes.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we get it on the record.
Has there been any consideration for common dumpsters throughout the location instead of individual recycling and trash and recycling? Because this whole, this whole thing looks busy. I just see in a lot of windy days and recycling blowing all over this development.
So because the majority of the units have garages and they have space in the garages for the recycling cans and they're afforded the availability of the curbside service, that, that's how the site was designed. I'm counting.
It's okay.
There's no recreation on this side at all? No playground?
Yeah, well, do you want, just one second. Do you want to finish your counting?
Yeah.
I don't know. Just let her finish the counting and then we'll answer that question.
Play baseball across the street.
One little truck.
I'm counting eight ADA spaces. Eight van accessible.
Okay, and there was, there was a question from, are you still counting here?
No, I'm double. I'm just doubling back.
Yeah. Leanne, the mayor asked a question about recreation.
So we have provided sidewalks throughout the site and as I testified, it is proximate to the swim club and the baseball fields. However, if it's, if it's the board's desire, you know, we do have the ability to put a tot lot on the site or some other type of recreation in that area.
No, it is kind of, I get what you're saying with sidewalks going around approximately the baseball field. Pretty much take away the swim club because that's private.
Understood.
And it's seasonal. And you got across the roads, but both roads you have to cross, but you get the stuff, but, you know.
Well, the baseball fields are also leased by a league, so.
Wait, but are they green acres? Because anybody would have the opportunity to play on them if they were owned by the township, when a league is not there, you could go out.
Sure. But we're just, I'm concerned with little kids. Maybe it would be nice to have a little farmer's like, I'm here, I'm just.
So in the, excuse me, in the exhibit.
So you're referring to 830?
Thank you. In the upper right corner, where it angles there, you see the three trees?
Yeah.
Right in that area would be an area that we could provide a small, a tot lot that's compliant.
Less trees.
We could, we could make up those trees somewhere else.
Well, the site is really stacked, very, very old.
The buffer and the, for sure.
I don't think Sherry would have a problem losing the trees there for.
They need change.
Well, they need change, yeah. As far as, you know, for little kids, I'm talking about teenagers, they go on their way. But it would be nice if, you know, there's a lot of units here, assuming that you have children here at dinner.
Well, that's a good segue to my question, is teenagers. What's the stipulation about construction with the cemetery there? Is, like, in that close proximity to a cemetery? I'm kind of unfamiliar with how construction works around a cemetery.
I, I am not, I personally am not aware of any stipulation, but we made a conscious decision not to put any buildings near the cemetery. We made a conscious decision to leave as you're coming in off of Oakerson Road. There's a green space there, so we've left over almost a 60 to 70-foot space from the cemetery to where the road enters. And then obviously there's a 50-foot buffer off the perimeter before any of our basins. So we really are not proposing any construction within at least 50-plus feet of that cemetery, if not more.
What's between the cemetery?
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt this for one second?
Of course.
Just for the edification of the board, and some of you may, may remember back, when this application was originally before the board and then it was ultimately appealed and in court and a judge rendered a determination with regard to the former warehouse application, that issue regarding the cemetery was thoroughly evaluated at the time. And, and the court, it's all in the record and the transcripts, determined that that certainly with regard to the development of this property, that development adjacent to the cemetery was, was not an issue. So regardless of Ms. Hoffman's response to the question, to be responsive to you, let you know that, that that was on the table a long, long time ago with regard to that. So good for you for raising that.
And then my, my second question is, the ingress and egress from Howell Road, is that directly across the street from the entrance to the swim club?
Yes, and that's what's, what is preferred, to have the entrances lined up. If you're going to offset them, you have to be 150 feet or more offset. But the preferred is to line them up so everybody can see the movements and what's going on. But the traffic engineer can probably speak a little bit more toward that.
Got it.
Would assume they're going to put a crosswalk. Question with the, the roof. You mentioned 45-foot roof?
So I said the height requirement is 45 and we're below that, which the architect can, can speak to the height.
Okay, okay. I misinterpreted what you said.
No, I might have misspoke. Thank you.
And I, I think I'm just trying to go through this in terms of the CME report. Ms. Hoffman, I think, did an excellent job of really covering all the, all the issues that I had identified or marked on the report. Is it fair to say that, other than what you have testified to, whether it's for clarification or objection, that the applicant is in agreement with the statements and the requirements set forth in the CME report dated May 2, 2025?
Yes, does Laura have a question?
I do. I have a couple. One, I just want to ask, you had noted the roads were going to be in a right-of-way. This is going to be private roads?
Private.
Private roads and the stormwater, similar to the prior application. I think you guys heard me tonight, there's going to be an O&amp;M manual set up. I would similarly ask that a deed be filed with the county with the O&amp;M manual so that it's understood. I know it'll be privately maintained, but municipalities are now being tasked with monitoring private sites, so I would just ask that on the record. The other thing I had, and I would just note for the board, they are proposing sidewalk along Oakerson Howell Road and they did show it along Michael Curtin Lane. I had the opportunity to speak with our in-house engineering department and it would appear, given the width of Michael Curtin Lane, the board may wish to waive it in that area. We may want to wait till we hear from the public, but given the width of that, they didn't know that it would be warranted. They did know, and it was noted on Leanne's direct testimony, that with the installation of sidewalk along Oakerson Road and Howell Road, that they would suggest curb, which has been agreed to be provided. And one thing that they did note that I thought was a good suggestion, and again, the curb would only be where the sidewalk is proposed, is the potential to loop. You'll see how the sidewalk terminates is whether or not they could bring that sidewalk back into their site so that if in fact you were walking along Howell Road, you can kind of come back into the community where it terminates. In the absence of that, I would want to see at least a five-by-five turnaround, so that if you had a wheelchair, it could get around.
We can, we can comply with that request and work with your office.
That was all I had. Beyond that, I think everything in my report was actually addressed directly as it relates to engineering.
Got it.
Counsel, will your client see Title 39 jurisdiction on the property for traffic enforcement?
So with that, unless there's any other questions from the board members.
Any, any more questions here?
That concludes Ms. Hoffman's testimony.
I have a question. You spoke, so the garbage for this community, like everyone's going to have their own can, right? There's no common dumpsters at all?
That's correct.
What is the can situation for the stacked units since they don't, they don't have driveway, uh, excuse me, garages, right?
Right, so we've shown on the plans, I thought I, if, I apologize if I didn't put it in my direct. There's a, there's a corral outside of the front, which is fenced, which is approximately six-and-a-half feet, seven feet long by four-and-a-half feet wide. So it would be enclosed. It would be obviously up to the resident to put it in and enclose it. I'm, I'm sure that there'd be neighborhood enforcement of that.
And are those the trash enclosures shown on the details of the site plan? They'll be masonry block?
No, that was, that was a detail that will be removed.
Okay, um, do you have a detail of the trash can?
They're going to be fenced. I can provide that. It's not on the current set of plans.
Okay, thank you.
Could you give consideration to a masonry corral? It's typically, it's typically requested.
For just the recycling cans and the garbage cans? So we're not doing like a dumpster. So masonry would be typically required, as I understand it, for like a large, you know, cubic yard dumpster. We're talking the length of this table for someone's private, you know, municipally given garbage and recycling cans.
Typically, we would still prefer that it be masonry or be designed to match the building so that it doesn't end up looking like an eyesore?
Understood. That I understand.
We could provide a detail for, for your review.
Is it by block or by fence?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Would it be by block or by fence?
Not fence. Typically, we prefer like a block or something built to kind of match the facade of the building, whereas fence, chain link, I don't even know that it would fit and then even would.
Well, privacy fence.
Right, like a PVC or something, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public while, while she's here. If there's, if there's any questions only for the engineer, please feel free to come up.
I have another question.
Daniel?
That's fine, we can do the public.
Come right up.
I just have a question.
Sure, could you just state your name and address, please?
Kathy Oakerson, 459 Oakerson Road.
Hi Kathy.
We have a lot of problem with water off that property. If you go down the bypass, you can look down the middle of the side field, the water running off. When I've looked at these plans, they just don't seem to have adequate drainage. The other problem I see the mayor brought up, what are you going to do with these kids? That's a lot of houses, that's a lot of kids. You're saying, oh, they go to the ball field. There's nothing to do with ball field. That's what it is, a ball field, nothing else. There's no equipment, there's no nothing. To make a little tot lot, it's great for the little tiny kids, but what about the 10-year-olds and all of them? What are we going to do for them? It just, you've got such a large clump of houses and you're going to have kids with nothing to do.
This is just, this is just questions right now, but.
Because, because Mr. Chairman, it's just a question.
This is just questions, yeah, but I do, you will have an opportunity.
So, so I think just, I'm going to frame it as a question about, about the recreation.
Yeah, is there any other that we could give little kids for? That's my question. The other question I see.
Just, just so the record's clear, see, I guess the two questions were, one about recreation.
And one about drainage.
The other question about stormwater.
Yes.
So, so Ms. Hoffman, can you respond to those, what I'm going to deem to be questions?
Okay, so with respect to the stormwater, this application, you know, meets or exceeds the required regulations by the state and by the DCA. And what I mean by that is that it has to recharge a certain amount of water, it has to hold a certain amount of water, and it can't release any water on adjoining properties. And it also has to reduce any water that's coming there now. So just to frame it, and I'll just use some numbers. Let's say there's 10 CFS of runoff coming to a point on this property. No matter what you put on this property, you have to reduce that 90%, 75% and 50%. So whether it's a warehouse or houses or whatever, you, you can't even meet what's going there now. You have to further reduce it.
So they're going to landscape the property because right now it's very humid?
There's stormwater facilities.
So there's stormwater facilities. So I testified that there's 17 different stormwater basins on the property and depending on the soil logs throughout the property.
That's why they have the water.
Some of it's going to recharge, some of it's going to be contained and none of it will flow.
Back to the field.
In the way it does now, because we have to meet and further reduce the runoff. We're not allowed to discharge even what it's doing now.
Okay, that was my question basically. And then you'll answer about the little kids later.
So I can, I can provide some testimony with respect, so the ordinance says that this development may, may, permissive, may include recreation.
Okay, it doesn't happen.
It's not, it's not a must. We've been talking about sidewalks throughout the development, we've been talking about, as you said, fields across the street. We've, since we've been here tonight, we've added a tot lot. And again, that's more than the ordinance actually requires, it's a may situation.
I didn't know how Howell Township felt about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Anyone else? Dan, did you have something else?
It was basically that. I mean, I was just going to ask as well if there was like another way to get some more, I don't know, a playground or something in, because that is like, it's situated very, the proposed spot, you said about the tot lot, well, it may not be required, like it's just where you proposed it is situated pretty far away from a lot of the other units, you know, because it's in a corner. So maybe a second one in a different corner, something more centrally located or, you know. I, I just, I guess echoing Mayor Leggio's comments, it would be nice to have like a playground for those middle-aged kids, you know, like, like two, two to four-year-olds play on different things than nine to 10-year-olds.
Just in fairness, I think a lot of the obstacle is in order to comply with the stormwater regs.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was just looking, I saw, I see all the basins everywhere.
This is a basin, this is a basin, this is a basin, this is a basin. So in fairness to the applicant, the availability of space to provide, I would think would be a productive tot lot. Like, we can add something in here. I would concur that I don't know that that's the most centralized or the best location, but I think a limiting factor is in order to comply with the stormwater regs, there's not a lot of open, open area.
And the trash from recycling.
But you do have the whole side of that. I don't know.
The whole side of the site is all potential basin.
Yeah, this is all basin.
This is basin, this is basin. So you want to be approved just for that tot lot there?
Oh, that, that.
With a big property?
What's that?
With this large property, just that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that that, and again, it's a board's, it's the board's decision. I don't know that you're going to yield the size of a tot lot in that area that's going to support the community just in this spot. And when I look at the site, I don't know that there's the availability of room.
So currently, the site is compliant with the ML 15. So currently, the site is compliant with the ML-15?
I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying to the boards, I wanted to point out the number of basins so that the board understood, like, all of these areas that appear to be shown, like with landscaping, that is a stormwater feature. This is a stormwater feature, this is a stormwater feature. So almost all of the green space, while they're planting it to try to beautify it, is serving for a stormwater purpose to meet the regs.
What happened to the days of just getting matchbox cars and a couple ramps set up?
Pop scotch.
Yeah, these kids outside, you know.
And for the townhouses on the Howell Road, I can see that there's 50-foot front yard setback that you're going to be putting there, and I'm going to assume what is the black mark is the fencing.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
No, that's the lot line.
So where exactly is the fence going to be held?
There is no fence on Howell Road.
So that's all just going to be all open to the back of the townhouses?
It's landscaped.
No, it's landscaped.
And the plan I'm seeing, it's not that.
So are you on the landscape plan?
I'm on SP-03, that shows the whole site. I'm not looking at this. This is not provided to me. At least, it's not shown on here.
It's on the landscape plan.
It's on the landscape plan. Hold on, I'll get you the sheet number.
But Leanne, correct me if I'm wrong, that is your required 50-foot buffer, correct?
Correct.
So that area of 50 feet is the required buffer?
This. I don't have that color background.
No.
Soil, erosion, stuff.
I think it's just planted, I don't know.
What?
Yes.
No, it's graded. It's graded, so if you go to sheet SP-09, and you see where the pump station is and how the grades are coming in between the units? We didn't do any grading within the buffer.
Correct, but it's not permitted.
I understood. Crystal.
Sheet 26, Leanne.
And there's landscaping plans starting on SP-21, right?
Correct.
I don't think it's graded, I think it's black.
And SP-22 addresses that area in question.
Yeah, yeah, we were going to cut this out. We need this turning around. Yeah, that's fine. So I had that, and then I had this area, this is like 15 by 16.
The regs are insane.
Yeah, okay.
No, 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 just make sure that it's aligned in terms of access, like, you know, in terms of orientation and access to those lots, I mean, you can mention that.
Yeah, here, please, you're forking. So we, maybe we want to discuss with the board some other locations throughout the site for additional recreational amenities that we looked at, so...
So if you're referring to A-30, which is on the screen...
Okay. Can you...
Do you want to get a different plan? Go ahead.
Would you mind pulling up, can you pull up the landscape plan, it would be easier to look at SP-21? Oh, sorry, Laura.
It's on.
Is that going to...
Yeah, because, so the building, so the building numbers are on there, Laura. So between Road D and Road C, at the southeast intersection, between Building 24 and 23, go up right in the middle there where those four, five trees are, where those two roads intersect, yes, right in there. So there's approximately like a 60-foot by 15-foot area in there that we could provide a smaller park, landscape area, maybe swings, benches, et cetera. And then we were collectively talking also, if you go to SP-22, just because the building numbers are on there, at the lower left corner of SP-22, Road E, which, all the way over to the left, right, which is a parking lot, since we're so far over on parking, if we shaved off the lower parking stalls, which would be on the south Howell roadside, that would give us, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, times nine, about 70 feet by 20 feet, and we could get rid of the turnaround and make another small amenity area there, so we'd have them spread throughout the site. That's just something for...
It would be much appreciated.
Something for consideration.
This is stacked, and I'm asking to take away units. To give, you know, if it was my way, yeah, I would walk. Take an entire building away, put a nice park in there for these people.
Yeah, as long as the board is comfortable, you know, shaving off those street parking spaces to make that happen.
This is reasonable. When this was all put together at first, it's all about getting as many units as possible, I get that. But it's also, it's a land, it's almost a landlocked piece of property off 33 Howell Road, Oakerson, and, you know, with the three bedroom townhouses and the affordables, we're anticipating a lot of children in this place. And I just feel more better than mayor, kids should have someplace to go. I don't think I'd be invisible.
So one thing I would suggest is, assuming the board, we don't complete hearing this application tonight, that prior to the subsequent hearing, if possible, they provide at least a rendering so that we could under, I just want to make sure that when we're saying we're going to take away the turnaround, I just want to look at the circulation patterns and just the conceptual layout. I don't think it needs to be designed, but just something so that the board and the public would be able to have a visual.
Can we update the site layout plan and the rendering? Like, the site layout would give us the circulation and the parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Anywhere in this thing that you feel could be carved out, one or two days, three days out, would be really nice, you know, just to add to it, that's all.
Thank you.
Yep. Just had a follow-up, going back to the garbage for the units. Was there any consideration to having some centrally located dumpsters instead of each individual townhouse with a garbage and a recycling can?
No, the centrally located dumpsters tend to be more of a maintenance issue, you know, someone leaves the dumpster open, someone leaves, puts trash outside, and we didn't want the community to feel like that.
Will this be maintained by an HOA?
Correct. But the dumpster itself, if you've, you know, been in some communities, people have a tendency to dump and run, and it's somewhat unsightly, so we're trying to keep up.
And I'll tell you parenthetically, like representing a lot of communities like this, it's the number one, number two, and number three problem, when, you know, these are older developments and they put in dumpsters.
Well, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint on some of the more narrower roads interior in the site, Howell doesn't have municipal pickup, so each of these townhouses could have different companies where it's every day of the week you have cans outside.
This would be private hauler, correct?
This can be private hauler, but through the HOA.
Oh, so it's not getting private company?
So curbside pickup.
Okay, curbside pickup through the HOA, okay.
Yeah, that would be a lot.
Wait, is that to say the HOA is going to have a contract with one company? I don't know if that can be a stipulation. Does anybody saying different companies pick up cans on different days? So it could be garbage cans out on the street every single day of the week?
No, it's going to be coordinated so that it's uniform, it's our understanding.
One company, different zones, some to that effect?
Something, I mean, you know, there's valuations, but that's...
It'll be coordinated by the development, so it's not just cans out every day of the week.
It's not 280 units doing different stuff.
Right, okay.
I'm actually kind of confused, that you just mentioned that about dumpsters, that tells me how the HOA is going to be involved with it, but then when I see about affordable housing, that they don't have a garage, but the whole point I've been hearing is, oh, he was just put the garbage out, put it in the garage. But now, with people that are living in affordable housing that have no garage...
No, so there are 12...
There's corrals.
There are 12, so there's 12 affordable townhouse units that are three-bedroom that absolutely have a garage and a driveway. And then there's 44 stacked units. In order to meet the requirements, and this is not my field of expertise, but you're allowed a distribution of bedrooms, one bedrooms, so many ones, so many twos, so many threes. So the three-bedroom affordables are standalone townhouses, integrated throughout the site, like the market rate townhouses. The one and two bedrooms are stacked and have a separate set aside for garbage that we were talking about how to, what's the word, what type of, whether it's going to be fencing or masonry around that. But you are correct, the stacked units do not have garages. That is correct.
I had one other question, just because you testified to the off-site utility improvements, but I just want to confirm and just note that should the board act favorably, there's an off-site pump station that has to be obviously approved.
Yes, and we understand that through the township, that's going to be treated as a capital project whereby there's going to be a presentation, a capital review presentation before the planning board. I don't know when that's been scheduled for yet, but in speaking to township attorney, that's my understanding.
Not that it snows anymore in Howell Township, but what, is a private snow contract removal?
Right, by the HOA also.
Just wondering where the snow would go.
There's no sponsors.
I'll push it all to the playground.
Well, I guess it could be pushed up into the...
Playground.
During the winter time.
Into the retention, the storm over there. Normally, they just pile up, that's all they do.
Any other questions for Ms. Hoffman, otherwise I have the architect.
Well, we, due to extenuating circumstances from some members of the board, are having a hard stop at 10 o'clock tonight.
Okay.
Which gives us about six minutes. It would leave literally not a quorum for us, so...
Okay, just, I mean, all right, let's talk about dates, I guess.
Yeah, let's talk about, I mean, Eileen would be, what are we looking at here?
The next available date I have is May 15. I have one submission waiver scheduled, one extension of time, and one application already scheduled.
What's that application, Eileen?
It's SP-1034A Gutierrez Properties.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we just said. Yeah, I mean...
Yes.
Well, hold on, hold on. So Mr. Simon, are you available next Thursday?
Um...
Or your crew?
My crew.
I should say.
You might see different folks than the two of us up here.
Okay.
But we'd like to have the matter carried without further notice, or need further notice with a voice carry until the 15th of May.
Yeah, we could, hey, we'll have some more members here, and we could hopefully go longer than 10 o'clock, if need be.
That would be appreciated. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what else is on the...
Gutierrez Properties is that night as well, there's an extension of time, and then, well, it was the gentleman that was here earlier, he's going to show up with his engineer, and that should be pretty quick, I would assume.
Is there any way that we could, after the extension of time, go after that? And I normally wouldn't do that.
I understand.
But just given, and I'm also, just because I represent a bunch of communities with regard to affordable housing, and the Housing Amendment and Fair Share Plan I know is due on June 30th, so...
Seeing, seeing who's in the, in the audience this evening, I think it's going to take some time. That's just my gut feeling, I think that it's not going to be, you know, an hour long. So it's all due respect to the Gutierrez folks that were already on the agenda, you might have to go, you know, after them, but I do expect this to have some time to it, just from seeing the audience this evening.
Okay.
Overwhelming to, Mr. Simon, go past the 10 o'clock?
No, that's appreciated, Mayor, sure, of course.
And Gutierrez, is that, that's, we've seen...
No, we have not.
Not that, okay.
They have not, and they do have violations with the 10.
No, we're just not going to.
Ah, right.
We're just going to...
Right, right, right. So that might be pretty quick.
And they've carried a few times.
That's, okay.
And I don't know what else to say. Mr. Kim, for...
Yes, Rob, we'll try and get it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, we'll try and move it along as much as possible.
All good.
But we, yeah, we just want a lot, the time you needed.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Witnesses all available?
Yeah, everybody's available?
Yeah, everyone, other than Ms. Hoffman, other than myself.
Well, Mrs. Hoffman, your complete height is pretty close to...
I'm here for no, another...
Yeah, I mean, we opened it to the public for questions, yeah. Who's going to be here in your spot, do you know?
I am not sure yet. There'll be another licensed professional from my office.
Got it, okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you for this evening.
Graduation calls.
Yeah.
Can't miss that, especially when it's across the country.
Yeah, understood, understood. Best of luck with that.
Yeah, I know, we actually, I'll tell you something.
Is there any reason to go into executive session this evening?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so announce that this matter has been carried.
Yeah, this matter will be carried to next Thursday, 7:00 PM. It'll be a continuation with the other experts testifying, traffic planner...
Traffic planner and architecture.
Architecture and environmental, if need be.
Environmental, if need be, with no further notice.
With no further notice.
We're all, okay, next week, stay.
Yeah, yes.
We're all agreeing right now?
I'll bring cookies, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everybody.